Alright, here we are. It's time for tunnel meeting number 143. It's April 22nd, 2025. And today, we are being joined by Andrew, Ashley, Guillermo, Ian, Jeffrey, Canichi, Mikasa, Tavo, Timelane and Zork. Thanks all for being here. Good to have you. As you can see on the screen share, a little overview of today. We start up with a couple of mentions. Then I wanted to give a quick overview on the survey we did for core contributors who choose not to participate in the governance process around budgets. And after that, I figured it would be interesting to have a bit of an explorative, well, a bit of a brainstorm in gathering inputs on workgroup autonomy. I kind of feel like this is a recurring theme. But then maybe not so well-defined theme. Yeah, in light of that, I figured it would be good to have pretty informal, no decisions will be made today on the topic, but just like collecting what people think. And if there are certain topics, we should get clear definitions on, or whether we feel like, eh, we just have workgroup autonomy. That's good. Let's keep it as is. That's also a valid outcome there. And yeah, if there's any time left on the slots, there might be space for open topics. So feel free to suggest them in chat if you want to. And a quick reminder on what the ambassador program is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are all quite in tune with the mission and vision of Singularity NHTSA and its ecosystem. And that want to contribute towards its vision of beneficial AGI. And we have a wide range of self-organized workgroups. So yeah, if you're interested in helping out, we do have a workgroup that fits your needs. To check out our Discord server, it will show you a how-to-join section, which explains how to join. And yeah, with that out of the way, I figured it would be nice to give a little update on ASI Mini. I'm not even sure in the room if people have even tried this LLM yet. It's pretty strong, I would say. And it's also very strong in getting features added. So I figured I would give it a little call out. Yeah, there's a lot of integrations that it's like multiple a week are starting to yeah, get added to it. So it's quite nice to yeah, see evolve. Like for instance, using specific agents is now a thing. It was not two weeks ago. And let's see, there's this knowledge-based support, which to be honest, that's there for a month now. But it just yeah, it was pretty cool to see that getting added. Also really made me wonder like, from an archive workgroup perspective, for example, we do have quite some knowledge graphs and like in a way, one and one is two. Like we should get a knowledge graph ready to, you know, to add it to the LLM and then we can just inquiry on all the archive we have, which is right now theoretical, but it's, it should be. Yeah, it should be possible. So. Yeah. And then just a couple of things that will be added on the short term is an agent launchpad. So within the LLM, you will be able to spin up AI agents. And somewhat related to that is no-code agents. So to spin up these agents, you won't require any coding knowledge. It's going to be like very, what's the word? Just very simple to spin up, basically. And another feature would be integration of Hugging Face. So from within the LLM, you can just ask the LLM which agent would be the best, which is on Hugging Face, which is yeah, a pretty huge database. I'm sure most of you heard of it. And yeah, I just wanted to give it a little shout out because it just keeps growing and it's getting stronger and stronger. And it's already pretty strong. Voice mode, something I didn't mention, which got added last week. You know, it's, it's other LLMs have this as well. But the speed with which these features got added is yeah, quite cool to see. So I wanted to call it out. Do check it out. Its website is asi1.ai. You can play around a little. Then yeah, I figured I would call out the BGI Nexus deep funding round and its results. If I'm not mistaken, we had four of our ambassador group people submitting proposals. And I think, I'm not sure if Clement is in the room. I don't think so. But Clement actually made it through and got funded. So congratulations there. Let me quickly grab a link. It's just on deepfunding.ai. You know the website. Let's see. Okay, I'm not getting that super quickly. Wanted to link to his proposal, but I'll do that afterwards. And connected to that, there's no sitting, no leaning back, let's say, no sitting still. Because a new round is already out there. This time specifically for, it's the second round for OpenCock Hyperon RFPs. They are relatively specialist, I have to admit. But that's because of the context of OpenCock Hyperon. I'll, I won't call it out completely, but there's, I think, six different RFPs ranging from 40,000 to build motivation frameworks for human-like and digital intelligences, up to $350,000 to develop advanced knowledge graph tooling for AGI systems. But it's a very wide range. There's there's one on research on mirror symbolic, the Nansen hierarchy reasoning. There's an AGI hardware-focused one. So yeah, it's pretty awesome to see this, this, you know, just it keeps rolling on. And so yeah, figured I would call that out. Then a bit more practical, this Thursday, the 24th. There's the AI2peace event. And this is an online event. You can check it out at peaceoneday.org. And ASI Alliance is one of the main sponsors there. And we do have, I think, top of mind, five people speaking and also a panel included. So that's, that's pretty cool. Oh, thanks for sharing in chat, Guillermo. Yeah. So basically Ben is speaking, Janet is speaking, Trent is speaking, Mayon is speaking, Matt from Goodness is speaking. And yeah, it's all about sustainability and well, peace, as the event name suggests. And yeah, there's, there's going to be a lot of interviews and keynotes there. So I do recommend checking that out if you have some spare time on Thursday. And then the last mention, not the least mention, I have to say. Earlier today, I had a bit of a call with Andre trying to puzzle out what exactly our ambassador program reserves amount to. Because this has been like this vague, yeah, maybe it's this, maybe it's, it's not been clear at all. And well, as you can see on screen, this is still a plus minus sign in front of it. We're not really sure, but around 2,000 tokens where they are in the system. But still, right now, the program reserves amount to about 410k AJX tokens. And Andre will add this to the treasury dashboard. We, I think we have all the data now that should be enough to, you know, given a real, real-time overview of the reserves. Like every month we get a specific allocation getting minted. And then if we don't spend it, it will, it's a dashboard. Like it will give the proper overview of what the reserves are. And I think that's it as far as mentions. Quick check on the room, if there's anything I'm skipping, which I definitely shouldn't be skipping right now. Feel free to speak up. Perhaps there's some event or some, something cool we should be aware of coming up. Also, if you think of it later, feel free to put it in chat. Alright, then. Let me stop sharing for a second to move to the results of the participation survey we did. Basically, this was sent to all core contributors that were able to join the budget consent process, but choose not to. And yeah, we tried to learn a little bit on, well, why is this? And can we maybe do something to improve that? And I'm well aware this isn't a governance, a workgroup meeting. So I want to do like, yeah, it's not going to be like a full, full analysis, let's say. But I still felt it would be good to share a little. 12 responses. Not the worst. I think it was sent in total to 33 people. So yeah, a little over a third of respondents. And I'm not quite sure if you can properly read this on screen. Zoom a bit. Yeah. So basically, it was only two questions, right? The first one was like, can you indicate the reason why you didn't participate? And the next one was give some comments if you want to. And so yeah, out of the 12 people, as you can see, three people indicated they didn't know they were a core contributor, which in theory feels like it's fixable, right? Four people answered, I wasn't aware of the budget consent process. Kind of in the same vein, to me feels like this is a fixable issue. Or issue, yeah. Three people indicated they didn't have time to participate, which is yeah, in a way, something we cannot really fix. I mean, we could make the time needed to participate a bit smaller, but it will still require time. Tavo in chat saying, basically, they don't check Discord. Yeah, there were reminders. I think, I think we have sent enough reminders. Yeah. Two people indicated I have no interest in participating, which is valid and not mandatory. So yeah, I'm not sure if we can really, I mean, in theory, we could convince them of the importance and then that it's awesome to contribute to the consent process. Might be a relatively hard one, I feel. And one person indicated, I don't want to share my opinion when it's not done anonymously. And yeah, that's, that's also very valid. This was one of the changes we had to previous quarters. Where, well, the feedback was not anonymous. So yeah, one person indicated this was blocking them from participating. And this is a, somebody selected other. So I think the full rundown of this one is at the bottom. No, it's not. I can read it out. The process is run by a few who seem driven by their interests, not the interest of growth of the program. Which, yeah. I'm not quite sure how to respond to it. It's interesting feedback for sure. And I do believe it's also covered in one of the comments. Okay, so to prevent making this go the full half hour. Yeah, I do want to share this. At the same time, I don't want to read out text for too long. There are no analytics and therefore no real transparency. If there are only a few persons who make all the money in the program every month or quarter, then it's only natural that others will stop participating in the process. Proper inclusive policies have to be in place. Like one person should not be task manager slash guilt deed in more than one workgroup or guilt. Or like this should be a maximum you can earn in the program. That way, mentorship and inclusivity will be taken serious. Right now, it seems the pipe belongs to just five people in the ecosystem. These are the five you will see consistently in the consent process. They are protecting their interests and not loving the program. Maybe wrong, but there's no way to even prove I am wrong, no real transparency. A second time transparency is being mentioned. And I think getting rid of the anonymity in the consent process kind of gives this transparency, at least some of it. Treasury should make analysis of the highest paid wallets. You will see that the owners are those most motivated to do consent rounds. Hopefully, there can be more fairness and equitable distribution of tokens in the ecosystem. Otherwise, there's no way in the world you will drive motivation up for core contributor participation in consent rounds or even anything. A recurring theme here seems to be like analysis of the highest paid wallets, equitable distribution, more fairness. This, this to me really connects to the topic that's on the governance workgroup agenda. Being, should there be maximums for contributors? That's what this kind of says, right? So yeah, in a way, I kind of feel that would address some of the worries. So yeah, I would, I don't know who wrote this, but I would really applaud this person to join the conversations on that topic in governance. That's the minimum I hope for at least. Yeah. So okay. Somebody commented yes, which I'm not too sure what to make of, but thanks for sharing. I think the actual question was, do you have anything you want to comment? And then the response is yes. Somebody commented, they have too many things going on, studies work-life balance. FYPs, I'm not sure what that even means, to be honest. Meetups, so I lost track of a couple of stuff. I will try to be available as much as I could, but I will still miss some stuff. Sorry for that. Please don't feel sorry. And Tavo, you have your hand up? Sorry if I only see this now and it was older.
Oh no, I thought they were gonna finish and then you.
Oh sure. Well, in that case, if I can, just the last two. Somebody suggests like, I would suggest various workgroup leads to reinforce its members when it's time for budget consenting. And someone commented, I feel like the ambassador's program is drifting so fast from its goal, thus my lack of interest. Okay, that stinks a little, not gonna lie. Yeah, let me just add there, if this person, this is anonymous. I don't know who this was, but if you ever feel like talking about this, don't hesitate to DM me. Tavo, thanks for holding on a second there.
I was kind of got stuck into the first paragraph where it was mentioned several times transparency and was like, okay, let's, let's check the transparency. I would share screen and for example, take out the pie chart just to kind of have that advantage. And maybe I can send request and then it's easier for you to find it. So if you, I don't know how many know, but in, we have this contribution sheet that's also shared in the, I don't know actually where you actually find it. I think maybe in the knowledge-based kit book it should be found. And it is public sheet and it's like related to treasury. It's definitely in the motherboard, but anyway. So everybody has their source data and they just quickly drew it into the PIVO chart and was checking the total amount of AJX everybody is seeing. And there was like a mention, like the top five people doing and nobody else getting nothing. And actually, that is pretty wrong statement. And I guess it's just because you didn't know where to look to information. But like, yeah, quickly, if you throw it up, this is the pie chart what it looks like. So there are names coming through, but it feels very like split to a lot of people. And if we look at the core contributors, we calculate that yes, there is like a list of seven people who are getting quite large amounts of funds. And but then there is like another six people who get still like a decent funds amount. And it gradually goes down like below. So there isn't like step change of much. It's really like who is able to contribute and participate. Yes, there is a large half of people who are like not getting rewarded. And we can see counting 94 contributors in the past six months. So we had one, over 170 members contributing or participating in ambassador program where only half of them got rewarded, which I think crazy. Like you don't really actually go to any like decentralized organization and assume that every person, every second person you see has somehow got rewarded for being there or doing something here. So that is to me quite like unique aspect. But yes, of course, it always does affect those who do the most. And right now, we have incentivized that program to be so. Like the more capacity you have to do, the more rewards you get. And then, but you also need to be aligned with other people. But yeah, limiting the idea of adding some limits will probably help to distribute it even further away.
I would say perhaps during the governance session where we discuss, if you could join in with that sheet, that that would be great. Or just share the link, of course. But yeah, I have to say, that looked pretty good. I saw the average was about 4,000 and I saw more than 20 people with above average. So in itself, it's, well, it didn't trigger any super strong alarm bells ringing to me personally. But then again, this is something that it's a recurring topic. So I definitely feel we should just cover it and puzzle out and see if it makes sense to introduce maximums. Any thoughts in the room? Feel free to just unmute and speak. Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that occurs to me is that person was saying that there was some correlation between the people who earn the most and the people who take part the most in the consent process. I couldn't see that from what I could see.
Yeah, I saw, I saw your comment in chat on this, like, let's, let's check that. It does make me wonder how much information we have, like especially, like I do think we still have all the, all the data. So we can definitely, yeah, we can run that analysis. I see now Tavo commenting as well. I stopped analyzing thought participation in Q1, but I could compare with previous results if that helps. I mean, yeah, in itself, it's, it feels like an accusation of something which is pretty bad. So if we have information to prove it's not the case, that would be helpful, I feel. Alternatively, if it proves to be the case. Yeah, that doesn't sound like an ideal situation, at least to put it mildly. Vanessa commenting, could do it, but even just looking at the names, you can see it's not true. Yeah, on first impression, I'm inclined to agree. Yeah, then again, I do feel it would be something. You know, rather than it being like, wow, I feel it's not the case. If, if, yeah, if you just can, can see it's not the case, that's, that's quite a bit stronger. So. Anyone else? Any thoughts?
I'm already checking up the names that match up. I get it ready, I'll let you know.
Sure thing. I mean, yeah, I don't want to spend all tunnel on the topic at the same time. No, I would say reserve the main analysis for governance workgroup. Because looking at the clock, there's 24 minutes remaining. Let's see. Yeah, I think this, for now at least, from my side, this was it on the initial, the form is still open. So if you happen to have feedback, you can yeah, share more basically. Let me hop back to the slides. Right with this. Yeah. And then this is basically me trying to come up with a topic I feel we should be talking on. So if nobody agrees, feel free to, well, we don't have to talk about it. But lately, it feels to me like the concept of workgroup autonomy is a thing that pops up here and there. And I'm not quite sure if, how well-defined it is right now. Like which topics fall under it? Are there topics we don't consider under workgroup autonomy? And I figured it would be nice to get a little bit of initial input. I know I put on the slide like, let's try and define it. That would not be my goal for right now. My goal would be to get a little input on, is this even something we should be trying to define? And yeah, if so, you know, just to get a bit of a framework, trying to get a sense of what everybody thinks about it. And that's as concrete as my preparation of this agenda item is. So yeah, if anybody has some thoughts on workgroup autonomy, I have some. At the same time, I would, yeah, like to invite you to participate. Something, for example, which pops up, which is different among workgroups. Is there a policy on who's a workgroup member? Well, to me, that would be, and this is all personal opinion, of course, would be a topic where it's completely fine to have workgroups decide what you need to do to become a member. I would put a little note there, like in best-case scenario, you wouldn't like close off your workgroup completely indefinitely. But that kind of goes against what I feel makes sense. Another topic where it comes up every now and then is rewards. Like we saw this in the, in the last consent round. Not to put specific workgroups on the spot, but you see one workgroup having meeting facilitation at a different rate, being rewarded than another workgroup. And yeah, that's, that's always like, that brings up a bit of discussion. Wait, to me, it would be a good thing if we have a bit of clarity, like, like, can a workgroup do that? So that's, you know, in the future, if it pops up again, we can simply say like, well, that's part of workgroup autonomy. And yeah, it also made me wonder like, are there even things? Is, how absolute is workgroup autonomy? Like can a workgroup simply do anything they want always? Are there some, some edge cases? And would it even be worth the effort of trying to define that? Or is it something we should just let evolve and deal with whatever topic happens to be, well, the relevant one at that time, to deal with it at that moment? Any thoughts on that? Anyone? Or is it the poor choice of agenda item to try and get input on?
No, I think it's a good choice of item to discuss. I think I'm just trying to backtrack in my mind through how we got to the whole concept of workgroup autonomy. And in my memory, it came out whichever quarter it was when there was loads of comments in the consent form telling workgroups how they should be doing the things that they're doing, rather than actually getting involved in the workgroup and trying to do it through that route. So it feels like part of workgroup autonomy is not just what you do, but how you do it. And I think, yeah, there might be limits to that. But with the current, we've got on the agenda in governance workgroup. With the current, we've got on the agenda in in governance workgroup discussions on. Like when a workgroup's outputs are not great, raise that. And I think we've said quite a lot of times, we want to try and decouple that from the funding discussion, because otherwise it's really too load. But maybe that is the limit of workgroup autonomy is when somebody's work is crap. I don't know.
Yeah, fair, um somehow assuming you can like, you know, objectively um.
I know, I know, but it's it's like when when people feel that a workgroup's work is isn't good. That feel feels to me the moment at which they jump in and start trying to tell that workgroup, oh, you need to do it differently. And that's when it gets a little bit contentious, so it's kind of like, yeah, is. Is it part of workgroup autonomy for a work group? To dif. I mean. What is good, as you say, on what is good. So I think, if I remember.
I I think your audio cut off a little soon there. It feels like I missed the last couple of words of that sentence, at least. Um but yeah, I I mean, it's it's another topic. I I don't see you unmute, so I I think you finished your sentence. I didn't get the last part, but on on quality and on defining it and and. Um. It's it's definitely a big topic, which which is also the origin, I feel, um you're quite right on that of of this concept of of autonomy becoming a thing. Um. Not accidentally, I think. It's also on the um governance workgroup agenda, uh how to deal with. Perceived low quality and. It makes me wonder how to. It feels like there's there's like a bigger topic. Which, you know, if it also touches on um. I'm not sure, actually. Okay, just thinking a lot but getting stuck and now was thinking again about the individual um gaps, but that's that's really separate.
Well, I feel like hmm most of the workgroups are. Kind of represented by workgroup leads and then. Most of the time, they are also driving the proposals that get funded. And these proposals are a bit of like a future roadmap, so the. Sooner they prepare the next quarter proposal or reports, the sooner they are kind of. Building the pathway to what are next going to happen. And they have the full autonomy to write whatever report they want, the proposal want. But as a collective through the concept models, they have that. Like that counterbalance, which is weighing and measuring them. Yes, there might be a qualitative issue, but that qualitative issue has to. Replicate and understood by all the others. If I'm only the one complaining, every proposal is getting passed, and you know this. But if more people are noticing that, okay, maybe he has some point there or here and the. The proposals or reports are not improving. Then at least the ambassador program has the autonomy to decide not to. Finance the roadmap planned by a workgroup, but they still have that. Kind of, yeah, the the aloneness of choose however this whatever the stage it is. And I guess another layer here is some common practices we have defined. For example, today is interesting day, D work is down. And technically, that causes a situation if it's down for like, let's say, a week or two weeks, nobody gets funded. So there are some standards that we, they don't have autonomy in. But probably if it's gonna be down for another week and it doesn't come up, we're gonna have a crisis planning and. We find a way to do a different way of regarding. And GitHub integration is working, but I haven't tested it yet, like with their real life actions to treasury. payments.
Yeah, fair. Would be a bit sad for D work if if this proves um. To be the way they get replaced um at the same time. Yeah, that's what downtime does, right? So. Yeah. But that that kind of feels like more like um. You know, dependency on proprietary software and then um. That's it's also autonomy, uh but but more like on a uh program-wide level. Something you said also made me wonder, like, um technically, can we stop a workgroup funding? Uh as as a as a program, of course, if we don't um consent to a proposal um. Well, we, part of the discussions we had uh last quarter. Also indicated that, well, then we would still try to work out a way where the proposal gets adapted so that we can work with it. Otherwise, because the alternative would be no funding, then the assumption kind of is becomes like. Well, then the worker will have to change, because otherwise they can't do anything. Um so in in a way, it feels like a bit of a theoretical. Yes, we can stop a workgroup uh from receiving funding. But it also feels like in in practice. The moment we get very close to that, I kind of assume a workgroup to then make a move and and. Well, adapt to the objections, pretty much. Yeah, I'm not quite sure how concrete this is getting. It doesn't sound concrete at all.
Yeah, sorry to jump in, um okay, um. Yeah, it's a it's a hard one, so it's a good topic for discussion, okay? Don't 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 be hard on yourself, uh but definitely we have been going through it in governance, um so. What is an autonomy body if it uh if it uh neglects the needs of the? Uh let's say, what is an autonomy organism if it neglects the needs of the body? It doesn't work, so a right hand can go in a in a different plane, you know, you need to you need to be on the same flight. So autonomy, it's it's just a nice word, uh definitely Lane have some. Some points on on the comment I read, uh and also Vani's uh questioning. Uh what is autonomy, how you will apply it or not, or whatever, it's like um. You go, you go and win the game. I don't give a heck what how you do it. That's your autonomy. You just win. But just uh let's use win as the objective, or you read your objective. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna deliver this. Okay, you figure out how you do it. Yeah, we need ten. Okay, you figure out how you do it. But you need to bring that that uh the objective at the end of the line. And you prove you are uh well, your your autonomy is uh, let's say, well, uh. You're you're responsible enough to be autonomous, because no one, it's not stupid to assume. I'm a father. I know who else here is a father, but you know, I have a twenty year old and and a and a seven year old. They can be autonomous, even my twenty year old. Can. So even even though we are all professional developers, architects or whatever, we still need to work on towards a plan. And a cohesive strategy and a governance. Um these have been the problems, so we have, as I mentioned the other, a couple of us mentioned the other day, so I don't want to be referred. Democracy doesn't always work. It doesn't work at all. Come on. So we did have a consent process. Uh a lot of concerns that are valid are are put on the table. But the majority, the demographic of our uh architecture is not helping. So that's a hard uh issue we need to address, because if we're gonna have. Uh uh I did, if I participate in the consent process, even though I. That's why I put my my concerns as suggestions and I tried to uh, let's say, back up some some of. Uh TiVo's uh discussion, uh uh but at the end, if I did. Put a concern and I didn't consent, it would have gone the same way, you know, because the majority. It's saying, I don't care, yeah, but I, you know, just let's 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 give it a go. So that is, that makes a weak. A body, and we are a big body, we are all together, small organisms, so if we don't uh address that. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna mix things, but at the same time, it's valid to mention, because we are in the ecosystem. How is that? And I'm sorry to do this, okay? I'm say I'm say I'm, and you're gonna say you don't need to be sorry, Peter, but I I do, because it's kind of the same thing. And 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 okay, you can kill me after this, but how? From ten proposals that get funding on Nexus, five I fuck from the same country. Five, fifty percent. That's demographic, that's the scale, the architecture of demographic into a system. So you can be autonomous, you can put a whatever voting system, consent process, report, review. Uh D work, GitHub, whatever, but if you don't have uh fair rules of engagement. Uh and uh. And let's say. Yeah, because there's transparency, e- everything is on chain. But you can play that. We don't have proof of humanity, we don't have uh uh the amount of engagement, it's not about rewards and. On people, because also there's this. If you're here, you work, you you contribute, uh there's others that don't, you you can all, you can say. You can, you can put your back on where there's nowhere to to back up uh with. You need a team to be able, okay, I'm I'm going on holidays. You need someone to be there. If there's no one there, okay, so the people that delivers are 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 there, okay, they they. The other ones moving the thing forward, but at the same time. Uh we need to attend some of the probably concerns that are on the on the on the form you just shared, Peter, before. Uh that we, we need to address, how many workgroups or guild you one member can lead, let's say. Uh. I don't know, because Vani says sometimes, but we, somebody is up to work for a hundred hours, that's good. If he delivers good 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 stuff, that's good. Uh we shouldn't limit that, but how what the other aspects probably we should probably address them. Again, uh and I'm gonna say sorry again.
Well, you predicted it nicely. No need to say sorry. No, I think it it makes sense, um but that's also in a in a way that makes me wonder, like, like. Um like, should we even, I I put it on the slides, like, let's try and define it, but I should have put there, should we even try and define it? Because maybe we don't and we can just. Like like you say, I I completely agree with, like, if you achieve the goals. Um that's what matters, like, uh uh assuming like normal, uh then nothing, nothing fucked up happens, let's say, um. To me, that would kind of um argue for for not even trying to to further define where autonomy starts or ends um. At the same time, I kind of feel like there there should be some basics, we might. Maybe in a way, we already have one defined by this this dropdown in the consent process, like. I kind of feel this workgroup's uh proposal doesn't align with the uh goals of SingularityNet, so that implicitly is kind of. Like, I don't think people would be happy if a workgroup deciding like, okay, screw this shit, I'm going uh to support. Pure Bitcoin, fuck SingularityNet, just gonna focus on Bitcoin, like, that that would be across the limit, I I feel. Um I hope most would agree with that. Um so that, yeah, I don't know, it's just a big question mark to me, like, like. Should we define it and and if so, how much, like, um? Is it just enough to say to people like, well, your workgroup proposal needs to be aligned with the mission and vision of SingularityNet? End of story? The rest is all autonomy, or are there done in the similar vein? Are there more? Um. Like, let's say, a workgroup decides to pay two hundred dollars an hour for whatever the task may be, doesn't matter, just as an example. Would they be free to do so um under guise of of like workgroup autonomy? I'm not sure. Perhaps some thoughts in the room from somebody who hasn't joined yet? Or joined, but um shared yet? Or is it just not a topic you feel, I don't know, care about enough to to share? This could touch on your own workgroups. Oh, and all of the sudden, I have nineteen messages in chat from zero to nineteen, like instantly. Nice, um. I see Ian asking for a definition of uh autonomy and. Vanessa answering, we're trying to define it, um. Oh, I'm terribly sorry for just getting all this chat in in one uh go. Hmm. It's about cohesion. You need collective governance over the workgroups, but which includes some autonomy for them. Then what is this collective governance? Um decentralized system should have ability to evolve. We have this workgroup set in stone and that's never gonna change, that makes uh. A low level, uh no, a level of inflexibility. They're not set in stone, though. It's also quite true. Um. For finishing, I can quickly show Q three and Q four relation to members' rewards and time spent. I think that makes sense. I I see nobody in the room raising hands or um unmuting and speaking, so looking at the clock, uh I do feel it's. Vanessa, right in time mentioning, uh wouldn't it involve breaking uh confidentiality on who consented in Q three and four? Um. So far, that has not been public information, um at the same time. As long as, like, it it would. I think at least, it would simply be a a yes or no on on did participate in the process. That's that's about all the information, right? It to me that feels.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm typing it. Yes, no, it's actually. A score of how much you engaged in and but there is a name attached with the score. It doesn't say, yes, how you voted, which way you voted, but it does show you how. Did you vote for all the proposals in all rounds or half of them or ten percent of them? That kind of gives that sentiment scoring. And i- if you have no score, it means you didn't participate.
Fair, uh honestly, can't directly straight up say like, no, that's completely fine to share into a YouTube um recording. Seeing we so far mentioned it would be anonymous, um.
The anonymous was your direction of what? We did say that it's recorded on chain, but we never put it on chain because reasons. Time reasons. Operational reasons. Not enough interest reasons, but we added it, so I know. Or we stopped the recording and I shall show you as for everybody who shares her as an afterdown haul. I mean.
Um yeah, I quite like that. Uh then at least the recording onto YouTube part is is uh not there. Um and then perhaps we have to figure out, I mean, maybe when seeing it's it's more clear, but um on on whether. To include it on the the governance workgroup uh session. Um. All right, uh then, yeah, the final check on the room, anything to add um into the recording of today? Um before we wrap up. Because she still can. All right, I'll take that as a no. Then, yeah, that does wrap up the recording of today. Uh thanks all for being here and sharing your time and yeah.